Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our regular session meeting. We're going to start off with a call to order and announce, quorum is present, Madam Secretary, quorum is present?
Yes.
Moving to item B, invocation and pledge. We're joined this evening by Mr. Renee Truen from Foundry United Methodist Church, right down the street.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Gracious Father God, we're so thankful for all of the blessings that you give to us. You are the source of all love and mercy. You are the source of order, and you are the source of justice and mercy, Father. We pray that all of those virtues, godly virtues, will prevail in this group today. Gracious Father, anoint the deliberations that will transpire here tonight for the good of the people. We pray for the community, for all of the residents of Jersey Village. May they be blessed by the benefits that this wonderful body extends to them. Gracious Father, at this time, we remember the families of Sergeant Sullivan and Sergeant Brewster who have fallen in the line of duties. Bless them and guide them. May they be strengthened by knowing that they will be together with their loved ones who have passed on. O gracious Father, lead us and forgive us for our sins. In the name of Christ Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation over and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you very much. Going to move on to citizen comments. Any person who desires to address the city council regarding an item on the agenda will be heard at this time in compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are not allowed to discuss the subject. Each person is limited to five minutes for comments to the city council. And the first card I have is John Brogan.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to speak here. Again, my name is John Brogan. I'm a scout volunteer in the Soaring Eagle District. My position is a district commissioner. Basically, we're the old experienced guys who help the new leaders do their thing, learn how to do their thing. Soaring Eagle District, just for your own information, is the eastern half of Cyfair ISD. There's about 1,200 youth involved in scouting in Soaring Eagle District. There are three units that are in Jersey Village, one at the Foundry. Actually, there's two units at the Foundry. There's one at Champion Forest Baptist Church here, and there's one at one of the elementary schools as well. There's about 500 adults that are involved in scouting, so it's a very active thing. I'm sure all of you all are familiar with it. I'm sure that I'm not the first person in a scout uniform in front of you all. My understanding is that you all invite and welcome the youth to come and sit here and learn about what their civics and what their civic duties are, so we appreciate the opportunity for them to come here as well. Actually, Lori mentioned that there's additional opportunities for prayer or flag ceremonies and all that, so we'll follow up on that afterwards. So I wanted to, perhaps you know, perhaps you don't know, wanted to let you know and just acknowledge and let you all know that we thank very much. We are actually using this building now for our monthly roundtable meetings. The second Thursday of every month, we come here and we have training for the young adult leaders. We have networking opportunities, some skills development, and so forth. So I want to thank you. That's really one of the reasons that I'm here tonight is just to say thanks for the opportunity to use this building. Last Thursday, we had our monthly roundtable meeting, which was our second one here, and we had a Dutch oven cookout outside, and we had some holiday games and everything. I'm sorry that I didn't invite you all to that because we had some awesome food available for you. But part of the reason that I wanted to, the other reason that I wanted to speak to you tonight is to invite you to our next roundtable meeting, which would be January the 9th at 7:00. The reason is we're going to do something that's very, very special, something that we have not really done throughout the entire city, and that's we're going to share the peace light. And when I refer to the peace light, it is a flame. The origin of that flame is in the grotto at the Church of the Nativity in Bethlehem. So we're bringing that flame, or the flame has been brought from Bethlehem to the United States, and it has been shared through scout organizations and non-scout organizations all across the United States. And we're going to do a share here in this building on that evening, on the 9th of January. And the history behind it is quite fascinating. I'm going to hand, I don't know if I'm allowed to do this, I'm going to hand you this information sheet. It's got a little bit of information, a little bit of information about what the peace light is. As I said, it started in the, the light has been burning for about 1,000 years in this grotto in Bethlehem where Jesus was born. Since 1986, every year, someone from Austria, because it started as a way to help Austrian kids, a relief effort, and they took that flame to Austria. And in the 80s, it was mainly in Europe. It was passed around in Europe. In 2001, after our September 11th event, it was brought to the United States, and it's been shared in the United States since 2001. But anyways, it's considered a messenger of peace activity for scouting, and we want to invite, it's not just a scout-only thing, we want to invite the citizens, the residents of Jersey Village, to participate. So I'm here, and I heard what you said about open meetings, perhaps you can't answer me right now, but I'm here really to find out what's the best way to let the residents of Jersey Village know that we're going to have a peace light share here on January 9th. We'd like everybody to come. I've already spoken with the fire chief. We were thinking about maybe having it over at the firehouse, but it's Citizen Academy, first night of Citizen Academy that night, so that's not going to work, but we may just have it here, and we'll work out the logistics of how to work that out. But anyways, that's what I wanted to share with you. And again, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and have our fellowship meetings and networking meetings here as well. Okay?
Thank you, John. Thanks for everything you do for the scouts.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it.
All right. Next card I have is from our local state rep, John Rosenthal.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for continuing to welcome me to speak here. It's been a year. Last time, when I was here this time last year, I had been elected but not sworn in. So for the past 12 months, it's been a distinct honor and a pleasure to serve as your representative. And I do want you to know that I do my very best to keep the interests of this township, which is wholly inside of District 135, I hold your interests when I'm in the state Capitol. And I don't know if you are aware that there were a number of measures, some were more public than others, but there were a number of measures aimed at usurping local control, taking away control from our cities and counties. I oppose every one of those. I think government works best when it's closest to the people. And so I applaud you guys for what you do. I appreciate the opportunity to serve you, and I'll continue to fight for that. Now, if you don't mind, I want to address your crowd. For the people of Jersey Village, if you don't know me, my name's John, John Rosenthal, and I have an office here on Jones Road at West, so it's just north of the HEB, 9601 Jones Road. And this Friday, we're having kind of an open house with hot chocolate and cookies. Come by, say hello, meet the staff. My district director, April, is here. She's here a lot. And I'm also here to serve you, so I'm available to you. It is my intention and my drive to be available. If you want to book time with me, I'll meet with you personally at your convenience, pretty much. So it's been a privilege to serve this last year. I look forward to having a great year coming up in 2020, and just thank you all again for continuing to welcome me.
Thank you, John.
I'm still recovering from my hip replacement surgery, but I was told by the doctor today I can drive, except my car's at the body shop. My name is Merrily Rosine Beasley, and I've been a resident of Jersey Village for at least 38 years. I have several concerns regarding problems in Jersey Village. I have been digging into the problems for more than a year and a half. I am a public health nurse. I care about safety and customer service. I have been very troubled about our local government, especially the Jersey Village Police Department. There are some people who believe that Jersey Village is a speed trap. I've had people outside of Jersey Village tell me that they avoid coming through this community because of what they see with the Jersey Village Police. I see JV police vehicles parked under overpasses all of the time. I believe that Eric Forrester was allowed to do what he did because the JVPD were utilized as a revenue source. The excuse is always about public safety. What about the safety of the police officers in the Jersey Village Police Department? What about the safety of the staff who worked for Jersey Village? This is dreadful conduct. I asked the city council, all the mayors, city attorneys, and city managers, how long have you known about the problem with Eric Forrester, the problems? Rod Erskine was mayor, and so was Justin Ray. Justin was the mayor for about five years while Eric was in charge. Leah Hayes was the attorney for Olson and Olson for several years. Mike Castro hired Eric. Austin Blis inherited Eric. I'm not sure why Austin didn't fire him when he first came to the city of Jersey Village. My questions are these. Mayor Rod Erskine, when did you know about the problems with Eric? Mayor Justin Ray, when did you know about the problems with Eric? Gary Webenhorst, Greg Holden, Mayor Andrew Mitchum, Bobby Warren, James Singleton, Drew Wasson, Curtis Haverdy, Leah Hayes, Scott Bowens, Lori Cootie, when did any of you know about the problems with Eric Forrester? What did each of you know about the problems with Eric? When did you find out, and what did you do about the problems with him? When I received his termination letter through a public information request, I was horrified to find out what he had been doing for nine very long years. I and others paid his salary. This is not the kind of conduct I condone. Eric not only intimidated the police staff, he went after people like Isabel Cato. In my opinion, Isabel is about the nicest person you could ever meet. I read in Eric's personnel file that Eric went after Mark Betts, Umberto Ramirez, and Rain Herzog. Did all of you know that there was a dramatic increase in the turnover in the police department for the last five years? Only this year, it was 30%, 36% of turnover. We, the taxpayers, are funding these problems. There was a discrimination EEOC proceeding by Veronica Johnson, a former female police officer, which she won. I will fund the others like that one. Eric Forrester was hired by Mike Castro, a former city manager. Eric Forrester was the police chief in Vider, Texas before he came here. Please Google Vider, Texas. Eric Forrester and police chief to find out more about his conduct there. I believe that Eric hired Ron Dooley. They knew each other in San Angelo. Please Google Ron Dooley, police officer in San Angelo, Texas. Please Google Leah Hayes in Waco, Texas. Here's a partial list of my concerns regarding Jersey Village. Safety of the JV police staff, safety of the Jersey Village employees, safety of the Jersey Meadow Golf Cart Bridge, safety of the money which the city council has decided is theirs. They prefer using money to choose to bail out the Jersey Meadow Golf Course, pay for the dog park, doggy dip day, instead of using it to rent or buy better voting equipment. Why aren't the residents deciding how this money is spent? Why did the city council pay $2,300,000 more for land than the Harris County Assessment Market Value? Is it because the city council can have their special development on the other side of Highway 290? Why was the current mayor, Andrew Mitchum, allowed to have the Jersey Village Planning and Zoning Commission, zoning laws changed just for him, so that he could have his Senate Avenue Brewery Pub? This brewery pub sits within 1,000 feet of a daycare preschool. Is it possible that the owners are afraid to speak up because someone like Christian Summers might go over to them and start to hassle them? I don't know. I do believe that could be true. I believe that Christian Summers harassed me about some political signs during the general election several months ago. He said they were too close to the curb. I noticed there were plenty of signs a lot closer up the street from me. Why did he single me out? Thank you in advance for your assistance. Merrily Rosine Beasley, RN, Republican candidate for State of Texas Representative, District 135. And by the way, you're going to get this handout, that handout. This is from Eric Forrester's file.
Thank you very much. Next card I have is Mark Malloy.
Hi, my name's Mark Malloy, and I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle, and I'm a past city council member for the city of Jersey Village, Texas. And anyway, I am asking that the city secretary, please make my verbal comments and documents given to her a permanent record of the meeting. And so basically, the first item that I want to talk to the city council about is the new legislation that has been passed dealing with public comment periods for the citizens trying to, you know, talk to their city council. And from what I'm seeing here in this legislation is that, and the legislation is HB 2840, and it says that it would require most governmental bodies to allow any member of the public who wished to address the body regarding an item on the agenda for an open meeting to do so at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of that item. So anyway, the reason I'm bringing this up is when I was at the city council meeting on October 14th of this year, the city government had discussions on an agenda item, and it was agenda item number two. And basically, they were discussing the Golf Course Clubhouse Convention Center project. And they were, you know, talking with a company called, or an engineering firm called PGA L LLP, and they were asking this engineering firm about what they were doing with working towards building this new facility. And during the discussions, one of the council members had asked the city staff how much money that the city had already paid PGA L for their services as of the time of that city council meeting. And so anyway, what ended up happening is there was never an answer given on how much that was. And so I, you know, raised up my hand to be acknowledged, to basically, you know, go ahead and say, hey, I would like to know how much that was. And, you know, the city government did not allow me to ask the question. And so anyway, basically, what I'm seeing is that, you know, when the city government allows the citizens to come forward and talk at the first of the meeting, they don't know what the city council is going to do during the discussions of each agenda item. And basically, by them commenting early in the meeting and not maybe being allowed to comment during each agenda item when the city council is discussing it, then they are not afforded the ability to have questions answered during that discussion of that agenda item. So anyway, basically, what I'm trying to find out is with this new legislation, is it that because Jersey Village has chosen to allow the citizens to speak at the first of the meeting, and they give them five minutes, and if they don't use up all their five minutes, then when it comes time for the city council to discuss a specific agenda item and the citizen has a question about that, why it would not be appropriate that the city government allow that citizen to ask a question that they would like to have answered? So anyway, basically, that's really the one thing that I wanted to come up here tonight and talk to the city council about. And I appreciate you allowing me to come up here and talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Do I have anybody else desiring to speak tonight? All right, we'll move along to City Manager's Report, item D. Does anybody on council have any questions for the city manager? All right, move along to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any council members wish to move to the regular agenda? If not, go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. And move into the regular session F. Item one, Consider Resolution Number 2019-81, Appointing a Member to Fill the Unexpired Term Ending September 30th, 2020, for Position 5 on the Recs and Events Committee. Lori Cootie.
Yes, Mayor, this item is to appoint a vacancy on Position 5 for the Rec and Events. We had a member resign. I believe in the meeting packet, there was included three applications of interested applicants.
Thank you. All right, we have three applications in front of us, Sean Zalasko, Ashley Brown, and Neil Cornwall. Do any council members have any recommendations for a position to fill?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I recommend, after a discussion with Ashley Brown, reviewing the other applications, I recommend her to fill the position.
We have a nomination for Ashley Brown. Does any other council member have a motion or would like to propose another candidate?
This committee generally meets during the day, is that correct? This committee generally meets during the day?
At 5:30.
At 5:30, okay.
Truen, you spoke to Ashley. Did you mention, did you ask what time she would be able to meet, she'd be able to meet those meetings?
It looks like she works standard hours, so she should be able to meet those meetings.
Okay, great. All right, so I have a candidate looking for a motion. If there's no other discussion on this, looking for a motion to put Ashley Brown into the Position 5 seat.
I'll do it. Mr. Mayor, I move to, to put Ashley Brown as Position 5 of the Recreation and Events Committee.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving to item number two, Consider Resolution Number 2019-82, Appointing Members to Serve as Directors on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board for the City of Jersey Village, Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number 2, for the term beginning on January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2021. Lori Cootie.
Hi, yes, Mayor. This item is to appoint members to the TERS. There's three positions that are coming due for the January 20 through the December 31, 2021 term. Two of those incumbents no longer desire reappointment. Ty Camp for Position 2 does desire reappointment. And in the meeting packet, there were two applications from residents that are interested in serving on this board.
So we have two vacancies to fill?
Yes, sir. Actually, there's for the new terms, so it's three positions that we're appointing. One is an incumbent that desires reappointment.
Got you, okay. All right, great. So we have two applications, one from John Baucham and another one from Robert Ottman. And I'll open up discussion of candidate nominations for those seats.
I'll just say that in different situations, I've had an opportunity to speak with both of them. I think we all, to some degree, probably have a little bit. I think they both make excellent candidates and would fulfill these roles quite well.
Okay, great. I've also spoken to both candidates. Both are motivated to serve the city in some capacity, and I think they would make a very good fit for this board specifically. So with that, looking for a motion to fill these seats and a second as well.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-82, Appointing John Baucham to Position 1 on the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Board, reappointing Ty Camp to Position 2, and appointing Robert Ottman to Position 6.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving to item number three, Consider Resolution Number 2019-83, Appointing the Presiding Municipal Court Judge and the Municipal Court Judges for the term beginning January 1, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2021. City Manager, Austin Blis.
Mayor and Council, this is the biannual appointment. It's a two-year appointment, starting January 1st, ending at the end of next year in 2021. We're doing this in accordance with the City Charter, Section 5.07.
Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion before us, or recommended action to appoint Catherine, I'm going to butcher this name, and I apologize, Catherine?
Chancia.
Chancia? Thank you. And Margaret Harris and Brett Kisluk as municipal judges. Any discussion from council? All right, looking for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-83.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving to item number four, Consider Resolution Number 2019-84, Appointing Umberto Ramirez as Municipal Court Clerk of the City of Jersey Village for the term beginning January 1st, 2020 and ending December 31st, 2021. City Manager.
Mayor and Councilors, this is to appoint the Municipal Court Clerk as required in Section 5.07 of our City Charter.
All right. Any discussion on the topic? If not, looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution 192019-84.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number five, Consider Resolution Number 2019-85, Authorizing the City Manager to Submit a Grant Application to TXVEMP for a New Street Sweeper to Replace the Current City's Existing Sweeper, Harry Ward. So I looked through the application. It was 33 pages. Very thrilling day for me. Do you have any comments on the application or kind of fill us in on what we're looking at here?
Yeah, thank you. Our existing street sweeper is aging. The costs are rising on keeping it maintained. There is a grant that Volkswagen is offering that we seem to qualify for, $112,000 or so. We'd like to put that towards some funding that we already have for a new street sweeper, and so we're asking for approval to go forward with the grant.
Okay, great. Anybody have any questions?
Do you remember what we paid for the first street sweeper?
I don't have it exactly, but I think about $80,000 or so.
It was closer to 60.
Sixty-ish thousand, yeah.
Put that much back into it.
No, but we just had it out for repair, and a number of costs came in that were unexpected, and we're just looking ahead at the future.
Any other questions? All right, if not, looking for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-85.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? See none. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item number six, Discuss and Take Appropriate Action Concerning a Progress Report from the Owners of the Property Located at 16884 Northwest Freeway, Jersey Village, Texas, Concerning the Progress on the Performance of the Permitted Work Required Under Ordinance 2019-11. the Progress on the Performance of the Permitted Work Required Under Ordinance 2019-11. I'm going to go ahead and call in Christian Summers to give us an update on progress.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Progress is being made. Many of the rooms have been gutted. They're applying mold remediation products. I am supposed to walk Building One between, behind Takeria Surandes sometime this week and walk Building Two, Three, and Four, which is essentially one building at the rear. Over the past two weeks, Mr. Juan Antunes has been attempting to submit roofing plans. Initially, they wanted to install a roof atop two other sections of roofing, which is not allowed by the code. So they've got a contractor now who is going to remove the roofing and install the new roofing. I explained that I would need an elevation view, essentially the layers. It's going to be made with TPO and ISO, so a thermal polyethylene type membrane and an isopolyseinuret R25.5 barrier atop the roof because of the low roof. They won't be able to do it any other way. He didn't quite understand what an elevation view was, but fortunately, I found a picture of a piece of, a square of Neapolitan ice cream on Friday laying on its side, and today I got a nice elevation view. That seemed to do the trick. I also asked for the engineer to sign off on it. TPO/ISO roofing can have trouble with billowing. You can only install it around the joints, and they're large pieces, so wind loads. And a little concerned about durability from what I've been reading about, so I wanted the engineer of record to sign off on it. Actually, get to those plans completely tomorrow. Other than that, maybe you can speak about the hotel taxes?
Yes, so, just to guess a couple other things. I'm told that about eighty-five percent of the walkways are to, are complete. Roofing material has been ordered and hopefully the new roof will go on this week. In addition, a majority of the mold remediation has already been completed, so moving on nicely. In regards to the hotel occupancy taxes, Ms. Cootie did send us an email breaking down everything, some tax receipts that were sent back. They've been sent to my client and they're tracking down, I guess what, my understanding is a return of payment from the city of Houston, so they are looking into that. And hopefully, I will have a little bit better update next month, and hopefully, this will be taken care of completely prior to next month. But that's where we stand right now with that.
The G C has his fifth wheel on site and his dog. That's good for security. I told the gentleman, Mr. Dillashaw, not to cover the subdeck balcony framing until it's inspected. There have been no inspections there yet. Not to move too far ahead or get too far ahead, or he's going to have to open everything up. And showed him some of the new codes from the 2018 International Building Code, where a layer of EPDM will need to be installed between the subfloor framing, the oriented strand board atop that before concrete is placed. Just don't want to get him, I stop by there every day so he doesn't get too far ahead.
Great. Any council members have any questions?
Question for City Manager, are the penalties accruing on that, those taxes?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Question also for the city manager, what is the policy for issuing a occupancy permit with back taxes due?
We would want to make sure that all the back taxes are due before we would issue a new CO, but we would have to work through the legal process of that as well. But I'm pretty confident that this issue will be taken care of before we get to that point in time.
All right. Thank you for the progress report. We want to definitely have you back next month just to receive another report. Do council members have any criteria that would they like to see met?
Just move to the first item. No, just that the progress is moving forward and progress is being made. It sounds like they're kind of recommitted to the project, so I think I'm happy with what you guys have so far.
All right, thank you very much.
I wanted to say that the next meeting is on January 20 at seven o'clock.
All right. We're going to have an executive session, so before we get into that, we're going to do mayor and council comments first before moving to executive session. So I'm going to start off with Bobby Warren.
Just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Stay safe out there, and I would just say, we're really appreciating everyone's house decorations. They look pretty fantastic this year.
I have nothing. Join Bobby in wishing all residents and city staff and my fellow councilors and Mr. Mayor a Merry Christmas and a great start to the new year.
My apologies for my full-time job holding me back this evening. I understand Rain Herzog got Employee of the Year, I think I saw, so congratulations to Rain, good asset to the city, and Merry Christmas.
I have nothing to say.
All right, we moved this at warp speed today. But I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. This is not just the end of the year, it's the end of the decade, as I said in my newsletter. We're going to be moving into 2020, which is blowing my mind that we've already reached 2020. And we have a lot to be, to look forward to, a lot to be thankful for in our city. I want to thank our city staff, our police, our fire, our EMS, all the volunteers who put forth time on the boards that are, that are open and volunteered, volunteered on. It's all, it's the work of all of these folks together that makes Jersey Village such a great place to live, in my opinion, the best place in the region to live. And let's, let's look forward and keep all of the planning that we've done for years in mind as we get into the execution phase on a lot of projects next year. We appreciate your support. And yeah, so with that, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. And we're going to move into executive session. City council is now going to retire to a closed session at 7:39 PM pursuant to the Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, Real Property, Section 551.071, Consult with Attorney, and 55, Section 551.087, Economic Development Negotiations in Connection with the Following Items. Number one, pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property, and Sections 551.071, Consultation with Attorney, A Closed Meeting to Deliberate the Possible Exchange Sale or Value of Property Located at Res D1 through 5 of Block 3, Directors Limited, Northwest Station, Section 1. And number two, pursuant to Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087, Conduct Deliberations Regarding Economic Development Negotiations to Locate a Retail Service Center Within Jersey Village. We will return to open session and continue with the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed deliberations are. All right. The closed session was adjourned at 7:59 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. Moves us into executive session, Item Number, we're going to reconvene the regular session and go into Item Number One, Consider Resolution Number 2019-86, Approving the Sale of Approximately 0.5739 Acres of Land North of US 290. Austin Bleece, City Manager.
Mayor and Councilors, this is to sell the land on Northwest, on Northwest Freeway that's obtained when we annexed in the mud. We're asking for approval of the resolution with the easement to stay there as well.
Any discussion on the topic? All right, looking for a motion.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2019-86, Approving the Sale of Real Estate is Set Forth on the Condition That the City Retains the Utility Easement as Agreed Upon with the Parties Involved.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? See none, all those in favor? Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Item Number Two, Consider Resolution Number 2019-87, Authorizing City Manager to Enter Into Chapter 380 Economic Development Agreement with Gordon Northwest Village LP. Austin Bleece.
Mayor and Councilors, there's no action needed on this tonight. We'll make some changes and come back next month.
All right. And with that, we'll go ahead and close the meeting adjourned. Yes.
Can you make note of the time?
The time is 8:02 PM.
Thank you, sir.
We're adjourned.